I'd like to call this meeting of Allegany County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take roll.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bada.
Here.
Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus. Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
We have 14 members present.
Thank you. We'll begin with the swearing-in ceremony for the Allegany County Government Review Commission oaths. Okay. Do we want to? Okay. The rest of you, if you want to come up so that we're ready to go when he gets here. Judge Avan-- well, I'll announce her when she's ready, when we're ready to go, so she can stay seated for right now. But the rest, everyone else can come up.
Sit down, babe.
Is that a district justice?
No, that's Judge Avan, sir.
Oh, okay. Oh, Willie.
Nice to see you.
She can't be a judge. They're supposed to be an old, cracky man.
Only one woman on--
Okay. All right, now. No, but I'm there. I have a case. I think I know you all.
Okay, I think we're set to go. We have the Honorable Judge Susan Avancheck going to do the swearing-in ceremony.
Hi, everybody. Congratulations on your appointments. Please raise your right hand.
Judge, this is your last one.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
You're fine.
We're trying to get a state budget passed.
She said she was on her way from the convention center, but let's move forward. We can swear in great need.
I will swear her in the hall as her penalty.
Okay.
Raise your right hand with the afterword. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of member--
That I will faithfully execute the office of member--
--of the 2025 Allegany County Department--
Of the 2025 Allegany County Department-- Review Commission--
And will, to the best of my ability--
And will, to the best of my ability--
Serve with fidelity and honor--
Serve with fidelity and honor--
And support and obey--
And support and obey--
The Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States--
And the Constitution of Commonwealth Pennsylvania--
And the Constitution of Commonwealth Pennsylvania.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Make us proud.
You actually have an important, a very important job.
And we will listen to their suggestions.
I'm sorry. This time.
Yes, we will listen to their suggestions and we will do stuff. Uh-huh. Yes.
We're going to move on to proclamation slash certificates. 13703-25 is being held, so that's good. We're going to move on to 13704-25.
That's a proclamation recognizing Dwight Bodorf upon his selection to the Veteran Fellows Program at the Hoover Institution, Stanford University, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulis.
Stand here with me. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a very special person here this evening. Dwight is the Borough Manager of Terenham. And just recently, Dwight entered the elite crowd, but he was in the Tribune Review as one of 11 people in the United States to be awarded to this program for their veterans. And that's pretty big honor. And I've known him for a little while, since he became on the Borough years back. How long you been there now?
Three and a half years.
Three and a half. We did a bus tour together, and I found places in Terenham I didn't know existed through him. And wasn't aware that he's a veteran. He's a military marine veteran with a Purple Heart. And, like I said, this program, I'm going to read the proclamation because it tells me, tells you about him and what he is going to accomplish with this program. So let me start by saying, Mr. Bodorf's project will be piloted into Terenham. Wait a minute. I think I got the second page here, folks. Hold on. There we go. That was page one. Whereas Dwight, who served as a Borough Manager of Terenham Borough, medically retired from the Marine Corps in 2008 after sustaining injuries in an explosion during a tour of Iraq in October of 2006, he was then awarded the Purple Heart and Combat Action Ribbon. Whereas Mr. Bodorf recovered, he finished his tour in 2007. This drives his continuous work with Veterans Affairs, as always, been committed to the positively impacting community and public welfare. Mr. Bodorf approaches public service with a steady team oriented, style shaped by his military background and years of veterans advocacy. Mr. Bodorf was selected as one of the only 11 individuals nationwide to participate in the 2025 and 26 Veteran Fellowship Program at Hoover's Institution at Stanford University. A prestigious fellowship designed to equip veterans' leaders with advanced training, policy insight, and networking to effect changes in the public service and local government. And whereas Mr. Hoover, oh, I'm sorry, the Hoover Veteran Fellowship Program attracts exceptional individuals who bring principled leadership, innovative thinking, and deep commitment to civic impact qualities our county needs for more than ever. It is designed that the military veterans, who are motivated to affect meanwhile changes in their communities and-- whereas Mr. Bodorf's project will focus on the growing rate turnover in the municipality executive positions and result of the insufficient number of quality people able to fill those positions. He plans to help address the challenge by connecting veterans of the 200,000 service members who have leave the military each year opportunities in the local government. And Mr. Bodorf's project will be piloted into Terenham. It will include local government and help to highlight the Allekiaski Valley in national stage. Whereas, in addition to the local government role, he has volunteered in effort to support veterans and has served as advisory groups at the county and state level. Recognizing regionally for his leadership, Mr. Bodorf sees his work as part of the broader commitment to community service and leaving systems stronger than he found them. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegany County Councilman Nicholas Fatoulis, do hereby recognize and applaud Dwight for his distinguished service to our country and to the Hoover Institution of Stanford University and honor his achievement bringing to Terenham Borough our region and in all the municipalities seeking a bright future. So I'm going to let him comment about the program and what it means to him and how he's going to implement this. And this will be your proclamation, so I'll let you. Your turn.
Great, thank you. I'm going to make it very quick. I am an appointed official for a reason, not an elected official, so I like to stay behind the camera. I just wanted to thank Councilman Fatoulis, all of Allegany County Council for the recognition. It is my honor to represent Western Pennsylvania and also local governments. I am, to my knowledge, the only local government official that's been selected ever for this program. So with a special focus on local government, so I'm hoping to bring some things back to the region that will really help all of us make government better. So with that, thank you.
So Veteran Day is coming up, and we want to personally thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Everybody, ready? All right, one, two, three. Gotcha. The remaining proclamations and certificates will be read into the record. 13705-25.
Certificates of recognition presented to the 2025 Shining Star Gala Awardees, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
13706-25.
A proclamation recognizing and honoring members who work hard to honor veterans with the Veterans Day Parade, which will take place on Saturday, November 8, 2025, sponsored by Councilmember Embrasia.
13707-25.
A proclamation recognizing Andrew Nygut as the 2025 Veterans Day Parade Grand Marshal, sponsored by Councilmember Embrasia.
13708-25.
A proclamation recognizing Cinnamon Coprich as a role model of civic engagement whose tireless dedication to others embodies the true spirit of community leadership, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati-Chapkus.
13709-25.
A proclamation recognizing Frank W. Dermody for his decades of exemplary service to the people of Allegany County and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulis.
13710-25.
A proclamation recognizing the Pittsburgh Equality Center on the occasion of its 2025 Pittsburgh Equality Gala, sponsored by Councilmember Bada.
13711-25.
A proclamation recognizing the Three Rivers Rowing Association upon the occasion of its 40th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio.
13712-25.
A proclamation proclaiming November 10, 2025, as United States Marine Corps Day in Allegany County in honor of its 250th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all other members of council.
At this point, we're going to have public comment on agenda items. There's quite a few of them, so go ahead, Jared.
First up is Sharon Bonifolia.
Good evening. I am back this month as a member of PIN and the Chair of our Allegany County Jail Subcommittee to strongly encourage my own county councilwoman Suzanne Filiagi and all members of council to be good neighbors to our residents in the Allegany County Jail and to vote no on the reinstatement of shackles. The voters made it clear when 70% of us voted to stop the use of shackles, pepper spray, restraint chairs, and solitary confinement. And if the sheriff's officers would be given sole responsibility to transport Allegany County Jail residents to and from hospitals, then this would be a moot point. But when Brian Engler, President of the Correctional Officers Union, makes astronomical amounts in overtime, and he is consistently one of the highest paid county employees each year as a correctional officer in the jail, it's time to consider why he doesn't want to give up those runs, especially when there is a tremendous staffing shortage inside the jail. So please, vote no and instead work to fix the real problem, the staffing shortage, and expect to get strong pushback from the union president, who relies on those shortages to pump up his own overtime. Thank you.
Next up is John Kestowitz.
John? It's your--
Point of privilege, President Katina. Would you please remind the audience to be respectful and to--
Yes. Just, everyone, please hold your comments and applause and what have you so we can get through the public comment period of our meeting.
County Council members, before your vote today, I want to summarize briefly the major reasons why we believe you need to vote a yes vote for our initiative, and I want to spend some time talking about our county executive's second most recent proposal. As you are aware, we have provided to you the ballot referendum statement, the petition statement, media information, statements from voters during the petitioning process, and the lack of any input from our jail staff before the referendum vote, all of which points to the conclusion that many, many voters, the majority, did not know what they were voting for. We have also provided to you statistics, narratives, opportunities to talk with our officers during Zoom meetings, our consultants' expertise, national studies, and media articles concerning the risk of escape and injury for our residents in hospital emergency rooms without the use of leg shackles. By voting for our initiative, you are not violating the referendum because it is clear a majority of voters were not aware that they were voting against the use of leg shackles on hospital runs. The County Home Rule Charter gives you the authority through the agenda initiative to correct unforeseen consequences, which in our case are all the escape attempts and the injuries that occurred in our emergency rooms. It has also been more than two years since the referendum was passed. The Home Rule Charter gives you authority to change parts of the referendum after two years. We are also aware that the county's executive's first proposal of having our sheriff shackle our residents in the emergency room is no longer on the table, primarily because of cost factors. At a recent county council meeting, she outlined the significant cost of our jail population being over 1,900 now. Her second proposal regarding the hospital staff attaching the leg shackles will not hold water. The critical issue is who has custody of our residents when they are in the emergency room. Custody is defined by what entity is preventing escapes. Our hospital security staff have many different responsibilities, not related to our residents. And our officers will be with our residents the entire time they will be in the emergency room, and therefore our officers will continue to have custody of our residents. The statement in the jail referendum that is preventing our officers from using leg shackles is the following, and I quote, "Leg shackles may not be used on any person in the custody of the Allegany County Jail." Therefore, our initiative must be passed to provide-- Can I finish that or not? Okay, have a good day.
Next up is Diana Hall.
Hello. In 2021, the people of Allegany County collected over 45,000 votes, or signatures, to place an initiative on the ballot that hoped to end the use of solitary confinement, restraint chairs, leg shackles, and pepper spray in the Allegany County Jail. The initiative passed with nearly 70% of the vote, presenting a strong public mandate for more humane treatment of the incarcerated individuals. Now that mandate regarding shackles is under threat. A proposal backed by just over 1,000 signatures seeks to reverse the will of 45,000 people? This is not just a policy dispute, it's a challenge to the democratic process itself. We should ask the question, how can a fraction of voices override a clear decision made by the majority? I acknowledge the concerns about safety. Since 2022, I know of two or three documented escape attempts during a hospital transfer. These incidents deserve attention. But how many hospital transfers have occurred without escape attempts, without full transparency? It's impossible to determine whether these cases represent a pattern or an isolated event. We cannot allow fear to drive policy without facts. It is unreasonable to justify sweeping changes that could endanger vulnerable individuals. Also, we must consider the condition of those being transferred. If somebody is ill enough to require hospitalization, they are already physically compromised. Shackling such individuals, especially in ways that could cause harm with chains connecting leg restraints to handcuffs, places them in a dangerous position. If they stumble or are bumped, they have no way to protect themselves, in other words, i.e. a face plant. This practice risks serious and life-altering injuries. This violates the policy of duty of care for those in custody. Can I finish? I just upset. There are better methods for humane and effective transport that balance safety with dignity. For instance, why not use case-by-case restraint decisions? Use soft restraints or medical-grade alternatives when needed. Allegany County should be a leader in reform, not a tail of regression. Thank you.
Next up is Brad Kerensky.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening, Brad. How you doing?
Well, I don't know when the paid lobbyists for the corrections officers turned into an elections expert, a lawyer, a health expert, the safety director of West Penn Hospital. I haven't been around much, but boy, a lot of stuff happened in those two years. But you know, going back to when the referendum was enacted, the reason that the county and the county executive didn't challenge that at the time, well, you have to remember the horrific conditions at the jail and the liability that the jail was facing for the misuse of all those things that the voter said the county shouldn't use anymore. Sure, the warden complained about it, but the county executive, the county manager, the law department, they were happy that those tools were out of the toolbox because they were costing the taxpayers six-figure awards of liability because they were being misused. And so when you look at this moral panic over escapes and injuries, ask the question, who's not coming before you to remove the referendum? First of all, the warden, the person that everyone entrusts with the health, safety, and welfare of the inmates and of the corrections officers, and someone whose professional career would be ruined by an escape. And then how about the persons entrusted with the safety of the hospitals? Serious people, all of them, mind you, all former police officers, well-credentialed, they're not coming before you to say, "Council, we're afraid for the safety of our patients and our doctors. You need to act." I just remind you of what Cicero said, "Quae bono," who benefits? Not the people and not the inmates. Thank you.
Next up is Brian Engler.
President Katina, point of privilege again. Could you please remind the speakers that they should identify themselves with name and address? The prior two speakers failed to do that. And also, if you could once again remind the audience to keep disruptions to a minimum.
Brian Engler, 710 Corbin Street, West Mifflin, PA. I'm president of the union at the jail, and I would like to remind what our language asks for, to let medical make the decision on whether or not shackles should be used. I think many people that I've spoken to gathering these signatures agreed that this was a Trojan horse. The word shackles was not on the ballot question at all. It stood behind the question. You know what else causes a lot of overtime officer injuries? Especially on hospital runs. On Monday, three of our officers were out with a combative inmate. He began to spit on our officers. The officers were then kicked multiple times in the head as they fought to restrain the legs. Eventually, hospital staff responded with shackles to restrain the legs, then replaced them with zip ties. They violated the county ordinance. What we're asking you to vote on protects the public, hospital staff, and our officers. Right now, the only correctional officers using leg shackles are on the set of the mayor of Kingstown. Please don't take our county executives bait. I agree with what John is saying. A lawsuit will be filed on her proposal, probably by the inmates, like Brad has stated, that she's allowing hospital police to shackle them. A judge will rule that custody lies with correctional officers. If you vote on our initiative, if you vote our initiative down, then we have nothing and the dangers continue in our emergency rooms. Maybe this is what people want. I don't understand that. We did our survey again this year, and this was the number one safety issue raised by the officers. Safety issues affect our morale, and assaults affect our mental health and our families. Escape attempts from our custody at medical facilities were more in an 18-month period, 14, than all 62 county jails in any single year over a 10-year period. Last week, I emailed you all the redacted escape attempts. You can see every inmate was charged with escape. These things did happen, and they are real. When my officers get kicked in the head, bitten, they miss work. That drives up overtime. Your affirmative vote today eliminates a dangerous unforeseen consequence of the 205 referendum to the public, and as I stated, medical will make the decision on the shackles, very much like hospitals will be doing. The difference is the referendum, they're in our custody. Thank you.
Next up is James Porco.
Not here.
Michael Malouli.
Not here?
No, he's here. Hi, my name's Michael Malouli. I've been a correction officer for almost 10 years, about eight and a half of them of the state system, the last year down here at Allegany County. I started my career at SCI Forest, 2013. I was there until I transferred home to Pittsburgh, SCI Pittsburgh, RIPS, SCI Pittsburgh, till they closed 2017, and then I went to SCI Albion. I would say I probably have done 200 hospital runs throughout those four facilities. That's a rough estimate. And up until I got down here, everyone would use shackles. I guess you could make the argument, well, they're state inmates, they're more dangerous, but that's not really the case. I would say, though, of the facilities I worked in, the county is the most challenging due to the uncertainty of the nature of your inmates. By the time you get to state, the guys have been through the county, they've been through their county bid, they've done their trial, they've gone to camp of calification. There's what I call a settling-in period where they're just trying to do their bid, where the county, it's a lot of anxiety, a lot of nerves, a lot of uncertainty, which makes it a little more-- it a little more challenging to deal with. One of the things I don't think anybody's talked about here is, probably of all the runs we take, probably a third or a quarter of those are detox-related runs, which guys who are actually coming off active addiction, going through withdrawals. And I've seen some of these inmates, and I will say, I'm not, certainly never one of the person going to refer to someone as a junkie or any kind of disuric language with that, because I've had addiction ravage my family in personal ways that I would never dream to have on anybody else. So I've seen some of these inmates, some of them also got the young kids, young kids who are throwing their lives away before they have a chance to do anything to even straighten it out, and they're fueled by, their minds are fueled by addiction, they're not making clear decisions, and as a society, we have a responsibility for somebody who can't make the right decisions at that point in time to make it for them, to put safeguards in place for themselves and for society. And we're not doing that right now. You got young kids, their minds are, "Go, go, go, just get what I need," and they're got one set of handcuffs. For someone's family to have to go through, say they're relieved, they go out, and they pick up again, and they don't make it back, because you didn't put a set of leg irons on them, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable for us, it's unacceptable for everybody here. It just doesn't make any sense to me that you're putting everyone in harm's way, including that person. You're not doing them any favors right now. If anything else, to me, you're doing them a disservice. I think we're responsible to do better than we're doing for the people trying to make a living here. Thanks.
Next up, it's Tanisha Long.
Excuse me, can you make a comment about that, Blue Jack?
Let's not engage.
All right, well, Tanisha Long, Crafton Heights. I'm not going to give you my full address because I have a tendency to get doxxed, right? So, one of the things I did yesterday was I voted. I voted for Bob Palmesina, happy to see that you're still here, and I voted for the changes I like to see. And when it came to the referendum, I voted for that, too. I take offense at the fact that John does not believe I know how to read, or that I did not know the language of the referendum. Voters knew. We knew what we were voting for. And voting was just one part of my advocacy progress. Litigation, legislation, policymaking, that's how you enact change in this county. And one thing that I do know is that this county is under a consent decree. And the reason we're under a consent decree is because correctional officers treated incarcerated people so poorly that you guys have paid out millions of dollars because they can't behave. And part of that consent decree says that they will operate under the use-of-force policy approved in 2022. That policy restricts the use of leg shackles. They are not allowed to use it. It prohibits it, actually. If you were to enact this, you would be violating the consent decree. And you can look that consent decree up, I'm not making it up. But one of the things that struck me while I was sitting in the audience is that Officer Engler, the president of the CO's Union, said, "We violated the referendum. We zip-tied somebody's legs." These are people who do not care about the law. These are people who do not care about the rule. They are going to violate it. And if you give them more restrictive tools, they will find new things to violate, they'll find new creative ways to harm people. They do not care. So right now, council has to act as a stop. We have to say, "We're not giving you more tools. We're not going to give you more tools of torture. We're not going to violate the consent decree. We're going to do things the right way." One of the things that I admire about the referendum is that it made Allegheny County the first, the first county to ban solitary confinement. Our use of force has gone down since we passed that referendum. A lot of times, the corrections officers like to complain that all the other jails get leg shackles. We're not all the other jails. We're Allegheny County, and we want to be the first in decreasing something for once. At one point, we were the first in deaths per capita, and we've brought that down because of the work of advocates, the work of community members, the work of council members, the work of the county exec, the current one. That's how we brought that down, and we can't claw back progress just because one man and less than 1,000 signatures believed that we should. We have a responsibility to do the right thing. We have a responsibility to follow the law and the consent decree that this county is currently under, and we have a responsibility to the incarcerated people who also want to see their families and go home, because you guys are not the ones who news articles are being written about dying. It's them. Thank you.
My name is Cory Roma. I'm a resident of Crafton Borough, and I'll keep my remarks short and simple. I am speaking in opposition to the ordinance reinstating the use of leg shackles on hospital runs. One of the main reasons I supported the original ballot initiative was due to the multiple stories I heard from jail, I heard of jail employees intimidating and outright abusing incarcerated individuals with the usage of the shackles. Passing this amendment would enable those same individuals who have proven time and time again that they cannot be trusted to not misuse this instrument of incarceration and humiliation to start abusing it again, and partially overturns the decision of voters like myself who voted to ban it in the first place. Please vote against this measure and instead work towards another compromise that doesn't violate the clear will of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Kellyanne?
She's not here.
She's not here? Okay. Joe, Joe Shaughnessy.
Joe Shaughnessy, excuse me, Lynn Hurst Avenue, Mount Lebanon, Pennsylvania. I'm here to say, please, vote no for the leg shackles. We already voted once as citizens, voting back in 2021, '22, and I know this is above this body to address, but if we really wanted to make change, we could make changes to, since corrections officers and the population are in danger a lot of the time, and because it is so dangerous for everybody involved, maybe we need to look at releasing those who have nonviolent offenses, minor drug offenses, things of that nature. But I ask you, please vote no to the leg shackles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Weiner? Wait. Okay. Ari Tilly?
Heidi.
Heidi? Oh, sorry.
I'm back again to encourage you all to vote no on reinstating leg shackles at the Allegheny County Jail for medical transport. Just like Tanisha and many other of my comrades are saying, is that we voted yes on the referendum in 2021. I, as your constituent, voted yes. I've been educating myself on every single election since 2019, since I've been able to. I have lump ones that are not able to vote, and I vote for them. And I know we keep saying 70%, and it's a landslide victory, and I want to really emphasize how big of a landslide victory this is. It was 168,000 people that voted yes on that referendum. And, you know, I just want to respond to the comments that were made by John. You know, if people are so ignorant about voting, I want to rebuttal that by saying that the 30% that voted no on the referendum, if they truly understood how cruel and unusual leg shackles are and how dangerous our jail is, I feel like the number would be way higher than 70%, truly. If people really understood how dehumanizing leg shackles are, how horrible it is, how unethical it is, I feel like we would have a different conversation. We wouldn't be fighting about whether or not we should have leg shackles. We would be talking more about what can we do to reduce recidivism rates? What can we do to increase rehabilitation? But instead, we're over here having a debate whether or not we should have leg shackles. I find it insane, you know, as a private citizen, as also, as well as court-watching, I see every day that people are walking around in leg shackles. I see people falling, and if this is for medical transport, these are people who are extremely vulnerable, extremely vulnerable. And I really, truly, truly, I beg you, you know, to vote no, because it's overall inhumane and cruel. So, thank you all.
Dave Swanson?
My name is Dave Swanson. I am president of PEN, the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network, and the pastor at Pittsburgh Mennonite Church in Swissvale. You know, about 500 years ago, my anti-baptist ancestors came up with the concept that church and state should be separate. In Europe at the time, your baptism was your citizenship in the nation. And I think separation of church and state's an okay thing, pretty good, pretty good deal. But I want to say that the separation's not complete. In communities of faith and in government, the protection of the most vulnerable is our highest priority. And for people, residents in the jail, when they are taken out to go to the hospital, obviously, they're already in a compromised situation. First of all, they're already in a compromised situation, being residents in the jail in the first place, and so the main crime that they've committed to be subdued by leg shackles would mean they got sick. So not only are they already in the jail, but they're ill. And so, what are we thinking that everybody who needs to go to the hospital from the jail needs to be subjected to this inhumane treatment that's not only physically dangerous, but just wrecks the conscience? You know, we see images on the TV, in the courts, of people walking around in leg shackles, and it is just the most ridiculous thing, because it reduces people to a state of utter helplessness. And so, if that's what you all want to do to the people who are already most vulnerable in our society and are ill and have the audacity to demand treatment, and then what you're going to do is further dehumanize them and put them in a position of utter helplessness, shame on you. Vote no. Vote no, and do not let your moral conscience be compromised by allowing folk who are already in this situation of total helplessness have that be exacerbated to this extent. It's not okay.
My name is Kayla King. I'm a resident of Bloomfield, and I'm a summa cum laude graduate of the University of Pittsburgh Criminal Justice and Law Program, where we focus on evidence-based practices in corrections and law enforcement agencies. I spoke a little about this a few weeks ago, and I just want to reiterate, anecdotal stories, tales from corrections officers do not, cannot, and will not outweigh the mass of evidence that attests that leg shackling during hospital transports is largely unnecessary. It opens the county up to liabilities. This county is in financial crisis. Do we agree? Do we need to be opening the county up to further financial liability in litigation? Leg shackling, actually, I agree with what Officer, your name, said earlier. Medical staff can and will utilize leg shackles. That is their prerogative as a hospital or medical practitioner. It is not standard practice of jail and correctional facilities people to do this. This county cannot afford the liabilities. The voters are paying attention. I'm sure you all saw the turnout last night. We're watching. Thank you.
Patricia Murray.
I'm a resident of Mount Lebanon, and I am a regular attendee of the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board. I've gone to monthly meetings since the first time I went to one in September of 2019. I went to that because that day, PEN was, and I am a member of PEN, my church is a member of PEN, I was demonstrating to call attention to the 16 people who had died in the jail, not in the hospital, in the jail, in the last 18 months prior to that time. What we heard that day in that hearing was just gobsmacked to most of us. The School of Social Work had interviewed residents of the jail the prior year, and they were coming in to provide a report, a summary of what they were doing, of what they heard from multiple, multiple folks that were living there. The food was disgusting. Animal parts and feces were included in their meal cafeteria. Rats and roaches run through the jail. People are cold. When they're trying to sleep, they're cold, they're shaking. They had normal, ordinary supplies needed by most women were not readily available. I could go on and on. Toilet paper would run out, all kinds of things. And we were just all just going, our jaws were, you know, dropped. So, many of us here were there at that meeting, and we've been coming every month, not for our health, but because we feel that it's our responsibility as residents of Allegheny County. The mistreatment was amazing at the time. Now, it is better with our current warden. Our current warden has done a lot to improve the situation in the jail, and I'd like to give him a lot of credit for that. But the idea of shackling or changing the rules that we, as citizens of Allegheny County, voted on in 2021, and this small group of people making a decision to just override that, it's like, talk about an insult to democracy? My vote means nothing because somebody said so? I don't know. I don't understand that process. So I would ask that any of you who consider these options have somebody come in and demonstrate exactly what it's like to have, to be sick, and then have your leg shackled and have to go through that process. Also, I think you ought to read up a little bit, or maybe you should have somebody come in and talk to you, what happens to people when they're in solitary confinement for an extended period of time. It really messes with your mind, and you're already in a not-good situation.
Thank you. Amy Scanlon? Not here? And then, we had a speaker from out of county, technically, I mean, Allegheny County residents are the only ones allowed to speak. Does anyone object to allowing this speaker to speak?
I do.
Anyone else?
You need more than me?
I need more than you. Okay. Is Jared Delorence here? He's not here anyway, so it doesn't matter. So moving right along. Okay, so, presentation of appointments, approval of minutes, 13713-25.
That's a motion to approve the minutes, the October 7th, 2025, regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All the appointments being presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read them all at this time. Go ahead, Jared, please.
13700-25 is approving the appointment of the Honorable Allegheny County Councilman Paul Klein to the Carnegie Library Board for a term to be effective through December 31st, 2028. 13701-25 is approving the appointment of Damon Young to the Carnegie Library Board for a term to be effective through December 31st, 2028. And 13702-25 is approving the appointment of the Honorable Brandon Markosik to the Allegheny County Housing Authority Board for a term to be effective through December 31st, 2028, all sponsored by the chief executive.
And now, I'll go to appointment review, obviously. Unfinished business. Committee on Budget and Finance for the second reading, 13670-25.
A resolution ratifying certain year-end transfers pursuant to Section 80503 of the Administrative Code, sponsored by the chief executive.
Councilman Palmesina?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met on October 22nd and recommended an affirmative recommendation. I move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bada?
Yes.
Mr. Brazia?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fettulus?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarety Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Palmesina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzie?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, no zero. The bill passes.
13671-25.
A resolution of the county of Allegheny amending the grants and special accounts budget for 2025.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny amending the grants and special accounts budget for 2025, submission 01-25, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Messina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Finance Committee met on October 22nd and recommended an affirmative recommendation. I move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All the, or anyone, any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fettulus.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsia.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, no zero. The bill passes.
The Committee on Public Safety for the second reading, 13669-25.
That's an ordinance amending Section 205 of the Allegheny County Code on the use of solitary confinement in Allegheny County Jail to allow for the use of leg shackles on hospital runs, sponsored by citizens of Allegheny County.
Okay, that was basically referred up here without a recommendation. They met on 9/24/2025. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now, I'll entertain discussion. Who'd like to speak first on this lively topic? Councilman Bekowski.
We can just go down the line, I guess. I recently learned something. I learned that one out of four hospital emergency room staff are assaulted. That's more than police officers, more than correction officers. And I recognize that this ordinance may not be all and end all, but if it provides safety for a nurse to keep her from being assaulted just once, then protecting that nurse is what I will vote for.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilman Walton.
Several of us have had conversations regarding this issue, and I think it's significant. And I think that it brings several things to bear. A number of the speakers spoke earlier of concerns regarding correction officers being abusive of inmates. I think that first and foremost, officers that violate the rules should be disciplined and dismissed from employment for rules violation. That accountability is first and foremost. I also believe that it is absolutely legally and morally required that someone that has a medical issue gets treated for that medical issue. And if it requires taking them to a hospital, that that should happen in every case. I also recognize that individuals in the Allegheny County Jail are detainees, and in many cases have not been adjudicated. They have not been found guilty. However, there is reason for them to be detained. And as a detainee, public safety is of the utmost importance for the inmate and for the public at large. And as a result, I think unilaterally, they should be shackled and transported safely. And as a result of that feeling and that belief, my vote will be guided by those recognitions. We have an obligation legally and morally to make sure that someone gets the appropriate health care that they need. We also have an obligation to the public at large that they are safe. And as a result, I'm going to vote to modify that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that one of the criticisms of the ballot initiative is that the electorate found it to be confusing, and there were concerns about its, great concerns about it not being understood. And I have always thought that that was what was the case with most ballot initiatives. Nonetheless, I mean, the reality is that clarity is, as far as I know, is not the hallmark of a...
Hold on. It's on. It's just a fire truck.
I would say that clarity is not the hallmark of most ballot initiatives. Nonetheless, 77% of the residents of this county did support that ballot initiative. So, as I speak to this, I consider the efforts that have been made by the county executive. And I would say that what she has attempted to do adheres to a specific and desirable standard. And in many respects, it might build on what Councilmember Walton spoke to. And that is the attempt to address this. Have you done all that you can to morally and practically achieve a desirable result? And that intervention on her part, I believe, was an effort to do just that. And so, for my part, I will be a no vote on the ordinance that is before us tonight.
Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you very much, President Katina. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Kestowitz, who has taken the time to give me a number of different meetings with the COs, nurses at the jail, and get a good perspective from their side of things. I think that, you know, it is not an easy position at baseline, and what you all are tasked to do can be extremely challenging. But I want to start off with, you know, painting the picture for everyone else in the room who may not be exactly aware of what, you know, a typical hospital run may look like in terms of staffing. Because I think we've had repeated discussions about the lack of leg shackles, right? The lack of shackles, period, is often stated. However, the incarcerated individuals who are taken to the hospital do have handcuffs on. They're escorted by two COs at all times who are equipped with tools to make sure that they do not escape, in addition to the handcuffs that they have at all times. So, I think at baseline, it is very difficult for a person to make an escape, but that is not to say that it is impossible. And I think that we very much need to balance the safety of the public, the safety of the nurses, the hospital staff, as well as the safety of the incarcerated people. My wife is a nurse, and so, that piece is very near and dear to what I think about when we discuss this item. And so, I'm going to talk about that piece first. I've had the opportunity to, unlike most of my fellow members of council, talk to several different nurses who are staffed at the various hospitals in Allegheny County. And one thing that we have not discussed is their ability to restrain patients in the event that they become unruly or a danger to themselves or the staff, right? We don't want patients ripping out their IVs. We don't want patients hurting hospital staff. As Councilman Bekowski pointed out, there is a huge epidemic of hospital staff being assaulted. I'll point out that that is not generally by incarcerated people, but it does occur on a regular basis. Sexual assault of hospital staff is alarmingly common. And the tool that hospital staff has available to them is utilizing both soft restraints as well as hard leather restraints. One of the big things that healthcare workers have told me is they prefer to have the oversight of those means because they can use the appropriate amount of restraints so that they can best treat their patient. They can make sure that they themselves are safe, they can make sure the patient is safe, they can make sure that the patient is appropriately restrained. They can avoid things like pressure ulcers, which rarely occur whenever we have handcuffs on incarcerated individual. So, I think that from a perspective of worrying about the hospital staff, they have the tools, and they are most expertly inclined to utilize those tools that already exist. I don't think that we need to add leg shackles in order to make sure that they are safe. That is the first thing. The second thing is the will of the voters. I think that Mr. Kestowitz very much has a point in that many people did not know that leg shackles were a part of this referendum. I personally circulated that ballot petition, and I think that the focus was definitely primarily on solitary confinement. However, most of the people that I have talked to since we've started discussing this, even if they were not aware that leg shackles were a part of that referendum, they were very much concerned with the overall harm that was occurring at the Allegheny County Jail. And consistently, I have heard that their intent was making sure that there were not tools available that were being used to punish. And I understand this referendum does have language, this ordinance does have language around punishment. However, we know that historically, that has still continued to occur within the Allegheny County Jail. And so, the removing of leg shackles was still consistent with what they wanted in their vote when they voted in favor, like 70% of Allegheny County did. The final thing that I want to address is the statement that medical staff have to evaluate and approve the use of these leg shackles. The way the ordinance is written does say that medical staff do have to evaluate whether the leg shackles can be used, but it's very ambiguous in that the correctional officers, who are ultimately in charge of making the final say, the jail staff, they do not have to do anything with that. They could, the hospital staff could say that, no, we don't think that this is appropriate. There is nothing binding them from then saying, okay, well, we're not going to do that because you said that this is not appropriate. They could still go ahead and use leg shackles. So, you know, due to the fact that hospital staff already has tools in place, due to the ambiguous nature of the language, and due to the clear will of the voters, I'll be voting no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Embrasia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, lost my voice. I'd like to reinforce my colleague, Councilman Walton, on the public safety issue that they're in with the leg shackles, on keeping folks safe. Like Councilman Grisbeck, my wife is also in health care and does serve prisoners from multiple institutions. And I've heard the stories, the good and the bad. And I assure you that when you send a loved one to work, you want to make sure that they're going to come home unharmed. Thankfully, her life has not been harmed, but she certainly has been threatened. I'd like to make another point that's a bit of a sidebar. I do not, will not, and I do ask the audience kindly not to hurl insults at the correction officers and the folks that are trying to keep us safe. This is a very risky, arduous position. And yeah, sure, you know, we see the numbers as well. We see them, just like you do. But these are folks that are putting themselves in harm's way to keep us safe. And we just need to be recognizing that and respectful of that, please. I will say two things. One, I think that if this particular issue, when the shackle referendum or the, you know, restraint and the referendum and overall went through, that was also in the time when there was a hangover of bad things that were going on at the ACJ. As I've been consulted and advised by the Nobel laureate Councilwoman Hallam, who's helped me gain a master's level education in all things ACJ, it was bad stuff going on. It was a bad place. And thankfully, the powers that be and the folks in the constituents stepped in and put one hell of a good guy in there, Warden Wingard, who has changed the dynamic of the ACJ. So, think about it. That was at a time that was politically charged, it was emotionally charged, that people went to the polls and pulled that lever or hit that dot to take care of this. If this were to come up today, under, I believe, a much better environment, a much more structured, more humane environment, this would never go. So, I just want to be, I think we should all be cognizant of that as well. And finally, I'll say this with a little add-on. The will of the people. I know a thing or two about that. I was voted out last evening. I know a thing about the will of the people, okay? But we can go further into that. We have to recognize that. But we also have to recognize that the warden himself has not stood before us nor sidebar in suggesting that we need to implement leg shackles. And I'm sorry to our correction officer friends, because I have asked the warden, I've asked multiple personnel at the county jail, whether we do or do not incorporate this and move forward on this one, and they have said collectively, no. And that is difficult for me to sit here, as, you know, parties aside, as somebody who wants to see that level of order, that I have to say no, because the warden has said so. And I, you know, as I sit up here for a limited time, I have to take that direction, and I have to take their words on it. But I would like the public to know this. Regardless of what this dais votes here today, if it is a yes, your county executive will veto it. Okay? So, we are sharing our opinions and our positions, and I hope that you're capturing that and cataloging it, because a better bill needs to come forth. For as much as we want to say yes collectively, it doesn't matter. It's going to get vetoed either way. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Filiagi.
My esteemed colleague to my right has said it all, and thank you very much for making all of those comments. They were also inspirational. I also am pleased with all the comments or thankful for all the comments from other members. I will be a no as well for the same reasons, but thank you very much, Councilman Mike Embrasia, for your very eloquent summation.
Councilmember Phillips.
Everybody has great opinions, and I probably, early on, you know, thought it was a matter of common sense for public safety. And then, I hear the arguments for and against, and of course, and we've been forcing, actually, to vote on this tonight because of time restraint. And I think that's kind of like a problem because there's some faulty language in the ordinance itself. And the question is, is hospital staff going to be doing it? Is the warden in favor of it? Who's not, who isn't? It seems to be a problem, but I don't think we're ready to even vote on it, but the fact is we have to is not a good thing at this point. But I will let you know how I vote when it's my turn.
Councilmember Hallam. Anyone else before? Councilmember Hallam goes. Councilmember Hallam.
I will be very brief, because as council's representative on the Jail Oversight Board, I feel like we have been talking about overturning the will of the voters and reinstituting a harmful practice in the jail way longer than it has deserved. And so, I would simply like to remind everybody that escapes and escape attempts are required by the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections, by Pennsylvania state law, to be reported to the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. That information is very readily available on the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections website. So, I am simply going to read the last decade is the information that they post publicly. I am simply going to read escape attempts for the last 10 years. There have been zero escapes from the Allegheny County Jail in the last decade, the information that's publicly available. In 2015, zero escape attempts. 2016, zero escape attempts. 2017, one escape attempt. 2018, zero escape attempts. 2019, zero escape attempts. 2020, zero escape attempts. 2021, one escape attempt. The referendum was enacted at the end of 2021, so these numbers going forward, as you see two prior, there were two escape attempts prior to the referendum being enacted. Now, 2022, no more shackles, zero escape attempts. 2023, zero escape attempts. 2024, zero escape attempts. There have been zero escape attempts reported to the Department of Corrections from the Allegheny County Jail or anyone in our custody since this referendum has been enacted. This is simply a solution in search of a problem, which, if the shackles are returned, there are many people who will benefit from it, and it is in their wallets, and it is corrections officers, and it is the taxpayers who will be hurt with the settlements we will have to pay out like we used to have to do prior to this referendum ban. And it is the incarcerated individuals who are overwhelmingly black, a majority of whom have some sort of mental health diagnosis, and pregnant women, who, by the way, this ordinance's amendment does not forbid the shackling of pregnant women or those with mental health diagnosis. I will obviously be a no, and I am ready for us to call the question of vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I would just like to say a few things. I've thought about this long and hard, and as president, I surround myself with people of different opinions. I pride myself on hearing different opinions. And in a meeting earlier today that actually took place a few hours ago, one of my esteemed colleagues made the comment that we like to pat ourselves on the back when things are going right, but when things aren't going well, or when there's a problem, I mean, we don't like to admit that. And honestly, when this ordinance was written and when it was put out there, I genuinely think there was some confusion. I think possibly it was misinterpreted. I don't know, I can't go back and determine what the will of the voters were at that point in time. But, I mean, he's right. I mean, we have a responsibility to make sure that what we're putting forth is quality legislation. And obviously, what we put forth at that point in time possibly wasn't quality legislation. I can't determine, like I said, I can't go back and try to fix what it was at that point, and I'm really not sure. But we have an obligation, obviously, I think a problem. I mean, these jail guards, it's a very dangerous situation over there. I mean, my hat's off to all the corrections officers. They have a very difficult job. So, we're not going to belittle anyone this evening, especially those correctional officers that are in there and day in and day out. That's uncalled for. We do have an obligation to do the best that we can, and that obligation is, if there's a problem and we think that we're risking public safety, we need to try to fix it. I believe the county executive is working on a solution, but I also believe we have an obligation as well to ensure public safety. So, there's a path forwards, but we need to make sure that there definitely is a solution in place to ensure public safety. That's what needs to happen, because whether it's one escape or 100, if someone's injured, it doesn't matter. I mean, one escape attempt is too many, in my opinion. I mean, any escape attempts, if someone gets injured, is too many. And I hear what you're saying, and I didn't interrupt you when you spoke, so please don't interrupt me when I speak. So, again, there is a path forward, but it's going to take everyone working together to make that and get that done. So, at this point in time, I'd certainly like to work with the county executive and determine that path forward and come up with a solution, so that she's recognized, obviously, that we want to, basically, that she feels that shackles should be used. I mean, that's what she has said. I mean, whether, I mean, the hospital facility does it, or whoever, I mean, she doesn't want to endanger public safety either at this point in time. So, like I said, working together, I think we can come up with a viable solution. So, at this point in time, I'm going to ask Jared to call the questions. So, Jared, please call the question.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bedkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bada?
No.
Mr. Embrasia?
No.
Ms. Filiagi?
No.
Mr. Fatoulas?
No.
Mr. Grisbeck?
No.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Ms. Nakarety Chapkus?
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritzio?
No.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
No.
Eyes two, nose 12. The bill fails.
Okay. Any liaison reports this evening? Hearing no liaison reports, removing on a new business ordinance and resolutions, 13714-25?
A resolution of the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, urging the United States Congress to end the costly and disastrous federal shutdown and fast-track funding for the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program to prevent additional unnecessary hardship this fall and winter, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to Health and Human Services. We'll now have public comment on agenda or general items at this point in time.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Would it be inappropriate for me to move to waive the second reading, and we vote on that tonight?
I'd second that.
Yep.
So, moved.
For what?
We have a motion to second on the resolution.
13714, Tac 25.
Oh, 13, I'm sorry. You lost me there for a second. So, the motion has been made and seconded. Discussion, or this is actually, the vote's just actually on waiving the second, on the waiving the second, the reading. So, Jared, please take the role. Do you want to, do either of you two want to weigh in on anything?
No, just we need to vote on the waiver.
We need to weigh in on the waiver. So, go ahead.
On the motion to waive the second reading, Mr. Bedkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bada?
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia?
No.
Ms. Filiagi?
No.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Ms. Nakarety Chapkus?
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
No.
Eyes eight, nose six. Motion fails.
Okay. At this point in time, we're going to have public comment on.
Take a vote.
So, that will go to Health and Human Services, so public comment on general items. At this point in time, I know a number of you have signed up for comment on the air quality regs, and I know we've been working on a solution, and I promised you that we were getting close. Now, I can tell you that I, since the meetings was going on all this time, I've been getting a number of emails coming in about, please don't vote on air quality regs tonight, please don't vote on air quality regs tonight. All these emails have been coming in. So, I think there was some confusion about us voting on the air quality regs tonight. I don't know where that stems from, but obviously, I mean, for everyone to understand, if we were going to do this tonight, we would have needed to sunshine this. And, I mean, solicitor, I'll turn it over to you, as if we were going to vote on it, what would need to actually happen.
It would have had to have been on the public agenda, which it was not, and it would have been a violation of the Sunshine Act to vote on it, because it was not on the public agenda.
So, it would have been an illegal vote then?
Absolutely, annulity, and council members would have been subject to summary offense for doing that.
I mean, none of us want to be the subject of, I mean, of a suit, and furthermore, even if it was brought up, what would allow, what potentially could happen is, that could be tied up in court, because someone like a U.S. Steel would be coming after us for an illegal vote. And we don't want to, and we don't want any illegal votes. If we're going to do this, it needs to be done correctly, and it needs to be, and I'm not going to pontificate from up here, but it needs to be done correctly. So, Chairman Klein, Chairman Klein, you have some good news, I believe.
Yeah. Well, the whole legal pursuit, that sounds like a great ride, really. But I would say that, in looking ahead, we, the Committee on Health and Human Services will meet next week. I think we need to finalize day and time, but probably Wednesday or Thursday, but we'll make that decision by tomorrow. And what we're trying to do is work toward a resolution that effectively demonstrates that this council is committed to discharging, you know, their responsibilities to the public. I know that's a vague statement, but we'd like to get this done, because it has now become a part of my life journey, and I hope I live long enough to see it finally resolved. So, the committee will meet next week, and the goal is to put it on the agenda for the meeting on the 18th of November.
So, without further ado, we'll now have public comment.
Mark Mitchell?
Not here.
Charles Atwood?
Not here.
Janine Rowland?
Chief here.
My name is Janine Rowland, Mount Washington, Duquesne Heights End. After being told I had no standing in court because I wasn't a blood relative, just related to a child by marriage, I started asking, if it can happen to me, what else is being told to our community? That's how I met Donna, a wheelchair user who told me we're the ones who get treated as the problem. A neighbor in Mount Oliver told me about the kids on her block, they are more strung out than the adults. I later witnessed this with my own eyes. A teacher confided they stopped raising their hands, the children do, because they think no one will believe them. And older clients across this region that I visit for work in their homes tell me, this has been happening for decades. This pattern is familiar. We know it in domestic violence, in sexual assault, and in neighborhoods scarred by gun violence. Our community is paying the price. A child who cannot feel safe will not thrive. Our schools, our social services, and our healthcare are all absorbing wave after wave of crisis. Our jail is absorbing wave after wave of crisis, while our families fracture. Make no mistake, the city of Neighbors is learning to look away, and I don't think I need to underscore to anybody here just how terrifying that is under the current administration. This whole notion that blood takes precedent, that it's somehow superior, is bringing me back to this advocate life. It's an outdated belief that excludes children from safety, stands on white supremacy, and doesn't reflect today's blended families, and as I've previously articulated, a policy not upheld by the law. So, who am I to challenge that? I was once the baby girl who should have died on a nine-hour car ride from Pittsburgh to Tidewater, Virginia. No windows, no heat, no shoes, no socks. I am also a Munchausen's-by-proxy survivor. I did not survive then to belong in a place in this cycle now. So, I ask you, what story will Allegheny County tell our children when they ask why nothing changed? And will you be proud of the answer? Thank you.
Benjamin Chisar?
Not here.
Nicholas Bartel?
My name is Nicholas Bartel, the Clean Air Campaign Manager with Penn Future, an environmental advocacy nonprofit, working for a stable climate, clean air, and pure water here across Allegheny County and the Commonwealth. Yesterday, democracy did its job with over 200,000 of your constituents choosing who they want to shape their future. For those of you who'll be continuing your service on, at county council, I look forward to working with you in the new year. For those of you who'll be stepping back, I want to sincerely thank you for your dedication and the many hours you've given to representing your communities. Moments like this remind us that every decision you make shapes the legacy that we all leave behind. So, I ask you to imagine. Imagine how your term will be remembered, will be bold and pragmatic, careful and fair. The voice that your constituents entrusted you to be, that legacy is written in every vote that you take. At the heart of our great democracy is listening to the people, and when we truly listen, Allegheny County speaks with one voice, that we want clean air. In the University of Pittsburgh's 2024 Quality of Life Report, they found that 82% of respondents felt that air quality is a problem in their communities. And in the All In Allegheny survey, the most popular response for how we should support communities impacted by pollution was, quote, "requiring polluters to have a permit and to pay for their pollution." That's exactly what the air permit fee update does. By supporting this resolution, you're not only supporting clean air, but the voice of the people. When Allegheny County passes this resolution, we'll see better enforcement, leading to fewer days where kids and families are exposed to pollution levels that break the law. With proper monitoring and permitting, families will have more money in their pocket to be able, with being able to go to work, and less spent on trips to the ER and with healthcare. This resolution may look like numbers on a page, but behind it, every dollar is a promise to enforce our laws, protect our lungs, and invest in the future of our county. As you've heard, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, there are a whole lot of folks out there who care, as this vote not only impacts our communities, but the many hard-working county employees as well. We're counting on your leadership. Our great representative democracy means trusting our elected officials will actually listen and support the decisions that reflect the voice of our people. That voice is clear. Allegheny County supports clean air. So, on behalf of Penn Future, our members and myself, I ask that when the vote comes up, that you vote yes for the air permit fee update. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next?
Jacob Poole?
He's not here.
Joshua Taylor?
That's not nice.
Josh Thiel, Hill District. So, I marked this for an agenda item, but it didn't work. So, all I was going to say is, I'm one of the voters that was voting for the shackle ban, and I knew, I knew what it was. So, thanks.
Daylon Davis?
Daylon Love. I don't think Ross is here.
Ross Tedder would be next.
Next?
And we have one individual sign up late, Len Young.
Is anyone, who, Len Young signed up late?
Correct.
Does anyone object to letting Len?
No.
Go ahead, go ahead, love.
Good evening. My name is Len Young, live in Monroeville, and I'm a loser. Not just any old loser, I'm a very dedicated loser. I lost in 2010 as a candidate for Pennsylvania State Senate District 45. I lost again in 2021 as a candidate for Monroeville Borough Council, Municipal Council, Ward Three. Yesterday, I lost as a candidate for Gateway School Board in Monroeville. I've been a political observer for many years, not just helping other candidates for elected office, but observing the many, the actual mechanics of how elections are conducted and what makes winners win. As an elected judge of election, yes, I did have a couple victories, mainly because I was running unopposed for many years. I observed the election process from the inside, as a poll watcher when not working behind the table. Since 2019, the year mail-in ballots became the law in Pennsylvania, I've noticed a huge amount of Democrat electors voting by absentee or mail-in ballot. Yesterday was no exception. As I visited almost every poll except one in Monroeville, I observed the posted list of absentee voters at each poll. A stark contrast was obvious. 90 to 95% of the voters were registered Democrats. The average proportion of Democrat to Republican in Monroeville is about 60/40. Something is really wrong with this picture. This morning, I looked at the Allegheny County website and observed the results of yesterday's election for Gateway School Board, Allegheny County Council, and the judicial retentions. All Democrats won, all Republicans lost. Not only did the Republicans lose, they were slaughtered. My autopsy indicates the method was a mass effort by the Allegheny County Democrat Party and/or Allegheny County Elections Department themselves to get a mail-in ballot into the hands of as many registered Democrats as they possibly can, either already filled out or with directions of who and what to vote for, get the ballot to the Election Department either themselves or by others, and perhaps even reward the elector with some type of goodie. Do I have direct evidence that's happening? No, I don't. As the expression goes, if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Yes, I'm a loser, but I'm a completely honest loser. I sleep very well at night, knowing that I did the right thing for the I sleep very well at night, knowing that I did the right thing for the right reason in my constant quest to serve God, to serve God.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, seconded by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Have a nice night, everyone.